Welcome everybody, councillors, I'm about to formally open the meeting. Before we begin, can I remind everyone just to turn their phones to silent if you wouldn't mind, please? And live streaming will be commencing now, so this is being recorded and streamed to the broader community. Good evening councillors, staff, distinguished guests, members of the public to tonight's annual statutory meeting and live streaming event. I declare this meeting open at 6:03pm. My name is Michael Tudball and I have the honour of being the interim chief executive officer of Darabben City Council. I would like to begin tonight's proceedings by acknowledging the Warunderry Woywarong people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land we now call Darabben, and pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Council also pays respects to all other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples and communities in Darabben, and council recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. I would like to start the meeting proper by welcoming our newly elected councillors. We have councillor Matt Arturi, councillor Connie Bogliss OAM, councillor Emily Demetriadis, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Ruth Jelley, councillor Julie O'Brien, councillor Christine O'Laurs OAM, councillor Alexandra Sangster and councillor Vasilios Tascos. I was going so well. I would also like to acknowledge special guests in the room, particularly former councillors who are coming in and they will be recognised later in the meeting. Before we get underway with the business of the meeting, I would like to invite Daniel Ross representing the Warunderry people to commence the evening with a Warunderry welcome from the traditional owners of the land on which we meet tonight. Thanks, Daniel.
Hello all, my name is Daniel Ross and I'm a proud Warunderry man, and I want to take this opportunity to share a little bit of my story, my ancestor's story with you all. Bunjul is our creator, the wedge-tailed eagle. Bunjul created everything we see, from the stars in the sky to the roots of the trees in the ground. Those roots of the trees intertwine through one another, sharing resource, just as we share knowledge from old to young. Bunjul taught us how to listen and how to care, but it's 2024, what does that mean? And we're just out of a season called Purnit. When the wattle blooms, we pause and we check in on our knowledge holders. So if there's somebody you haven't spoken to for a while, reach out. But there's a flip side to Purnit. Yam daisies are coming to flower, tadpoles in ponds, councillors being elected. 236 years ago, life as we knew it would change. I'm undecided if it's for better or worse, but we're here collectively. We were forced off what was home to places like Corin Dirk. At Corin Dirk, we weren't allowed to speak our native tongue, but we were one of the most profitable reserves of its time. So for those of you here that speak languages other than English, I implore you to teach your future generations, those young minds, those future leaders, because losing language is an absolute travesty to the fabric and identity of who we all are. At the mission, Uncle Billabalei was our headman, and he walked from what we call Hillsville today to Melbourne to negotiate our first treaty. But on that journey, he took two little fellas, Uncle Simon Wonga and Uncle William Barak. So try to listen to those young minds, guide them, they are our future leaders. We have a huge responsibility, but Uncle Barak gave my great-grandmother the tribal name Bulunbulun, and it means white butterfly. Gentle, caring, nurturing, amazing the way they do business. Nam would be instrumental in opening the first health service for Aboriginal people here in Victoria. Hold on to the essence of our culture, the way Bunjul taught us how to listen, how to care and how we come together collectively as one. I want to pay respects to my elders past and present, but more importantly, I want to pay my respects to each and every one of you and acknowledge your elders past and present, to all First Nations joining us today. Omen Jiko Warunderry Bulak, Yemen, Gondibik. In the Woyron language, I just said welcome to the traditional lands of the Warunderry people. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Daniel, I appreciate your time here tonight and the wonderful welcome to the community here. Okay, so in accordance with section 25.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. The officer recommendation is before you that council resolves pursuant to section 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules 2020, I'm required to take the role of temporary chair of this meeting until the election of the mayor has been conducted. Before we move on to the business of the evening, an important reminder that council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to everyone attending tonight's meeting to make them feel safe both physically and emotionally. Tonight is a very special occasion and it's important that the chamber remains respectful so that we can acknowledge and recognise the outgoing councillors and welcome the new mayor and deputy mayor and councillor group here tonight. Firstly, I'll record any apologies and we have received apologies from the Honourable Jed Carney MP, Nathan Lambert MP and Cat Theophanous MP. Councillors, are there any declarations of conflict of interest in the meeting tonight? And know that you don't have a conflict because you're voting on each other. Thank you councillors. The first item of business, item 4.1, is the term of office for the mayor of 2425. 26.3 of the Local Government Act 2020 to elect the mayor for a term of one year. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Greco, thank you. A seconder, councillor Atari, thank you. Does a mover wish to speak to the motion?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, the seconder? Thank you, councillor. I will put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, by a show of hands? Thank you, that's unanimous. Just for the community, so that was voting for the term of the mayor, so the person appointed, elected as mayor, will serve for one year. Before I call for nominations for the position of mayor, I would like to outline the process for nomination and election of the mayor. The election of the mayor will be conducted in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 and Council's Governance Rules. Firstly, I will call for nominations. Any councillor that is in attendance tonight may nominate any councillor for the office of mayor, or councillors can nominate themselves. The nomination must be seconded and the candidate must consent to their nomination. There is no opportunity to speak for or against nominations. So I'll call for a nomination, when I receive a nomination, I'll then call for a seconder, then I will go to the nominee, seeking their consent to be in the election for mayor. To be elected as mayor, a candidate must receive a vote of an absolute majority of the council, that is, five votes. So it's fairly straightforward, in that circumstance, the most number of votes, five or above, is successful. Once all nominations are received and I move to the election, no further nominations can be made. If there is only one nomination, I will declare that councillor duly elected as mayor. If there is more than one nomination received, a vote will be taken to elect one of the candidates. If this is required, voting will be undertaken by a show of hands for each nominee after I read out their name. Councillors in attendance at the meeting must vote for one of the candidates. As I said, if one candidate receives an absolute majority of votes, that is five or more, I will declare that councillor elected. If no candidate receives an absolute majority of votes, the candidate with the least number of votes will be defeated. I will then ask councillors to vote again for the remaining candidates, and again, if necessary, until one councillor has an absolute majority of votes. In the event that an absolute majority cannot be achieved after three rounds of votes, the meeting will be adjourned to a later specified time and date. If after conducting three new election process meetings, an absolute majority cannot be achieved, the election of a mayor will be determined by lot. If this is required, I will explain the process that I will follow. So councillors, I'm in your hands. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor for 2425 council year? Councillor Demetriadis?
I'd like to nominate councillor Christine O'Laurs.
Councillor O'Laurs nominated by councillor Demetriadis. Is there a seconder for that nomination, councillor Arturi?
It's my pleasure to second the nomination.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Laurs, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
Thank you. I again call for nominations for the position of mayor. Are there further nominations? There are no further nominations, and as I outlined before, it is my pleasure to announce that councillor Christine O'Laurs is mayor of Darabben for 202425. Thanks very much to the community for that as well. Councillor O'Laurs, Mayor O'Laurs, if I could ask you to come forward, what we do now is robe you in the official robes, and my work here is done, so I'll move over to there, and if you'd like to come down here. So we'll just take a minute, folks, whilst the mayor gets robed, and then councillor O'Laurs as our new mayor will take the chair. Just while the mayor is being robed up, I'll just advise councillors, if anyone wishes to say any words about the election of the mayor prior to the, I think it's prior to the mayor address? After, after, okay, afterwards. So just putting you on notice, councillors, if you would like to say something, you will have an opportunity. Mayor, here is your spot here. Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Bear with me while I work out what I'm doing here. Thank you all. I'm incredibly honoured to accept the role of mayor of Darabben and will undertake the responsibility with the respect it deserves and with the interests of the committee always front and centre. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting tonight on the lands of the Wurundjeri Wurung people and pay my respects to their elders past and present, and also extend that respect to any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people here tonight. At this historic point in time, with treaty negotiations commencing, I also affirm my enduring commitment to working alongside our First Nations people. First Nations people, I acknowledge that sovereignty was never ceded and that this always was and always will be Aboriginal land. I have to also note that today is the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and as a longstanding activist in this area, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that and mention that violence against women and girls is one of the most prevalent and pervasive human rights violations globally, but also here in this community. So, to the people of the Central Ward, thank you so much for placing your trust in me as your councillor. I won't let you down. I also won't let down the rest of Darabben residents as well. I am incredibly grateful to everyone who assisted with my campaign. I couldn't have done it without your support, encouragement and hard work, and there's quite a lot of you here tonight, so thank you very much. And particular thanks to my partner Shelley, who has been by my side throughout. For those who don't know me, I come from a Macedonian migrant background. I've lived in Darabben for nearly 35 years, and I think it's, you know, an amazing place. I love that our community is so diverse, it's inclusive and engaged, and people here actually care about social justice, and I think that's really great. Until recently, I was the CEO at Fitzroy Legal Service, and prior to that, I ran a women's health organisation for about a decade, and I've got more than 20 years' experience sitting on community and government boards, a proven record of financial management, relationship building and governance. And finally, I am a champion of equality and inclusion, a tireless advocate for people facing discrimination or disadvantage, and for women's safety, as you've heard. I've got a long history also of local action on the climate emergency. So I'm telling you all of this not to talk myself up, but to let you know a bit about myself, but mostly to give you the confidence that I have the expertise and the values needed to be your mayor. Thanks to the people of Darabben for electing this new council with seven new councillors. I think it's a really exciting prospect, and do please give us a little bit of grace, myself tonight, but all of us, as we kind of, you know, find our feet in these roles. But we are lucky enough to have two re-elected councillors, councillor Demetriadis and councillor Greco, who have loads of experience and knowledge, and were elected with really strong support from the community, so that's, you know, that's going to make it really a great council, I think. Over the last week, we've spent a lot of time together, we've been doing induction training, but as a group of councillors, and everyone has confirmed that they're committed to being a council that is community-focused, that works as a team and is collaborative. We know that we have different opinions, we know that we won't always be able to reach agreement, however, I believe that every councillor here has the community's best interests at heart. As your mayor, I will do all that I can to make sure that this is a council that works for you and that you see positive community outcomes. We've got a lot of important work to do over the next year, appointing an ongoing CEO, working with you, the community, to set the community vision, developing a new council plan and budget. So I'm so excited to get started, working together with the other councillors and our community to make Darabben the best it can be, a thriving community that is fair, inclusive, connected and sustainable. Thank you.
Congratulations once again, Mayor O'Laurs. Now is the chance, councillors, that I did offer, if anyone wanted to speak in support of the new mayor, now is your time. Councillor Atari?
Absolutely. Son, yes, fantastic. Mayor O'Laurs, can I congratulate you on your election to the mayoralty? Over decades, you have been a fierce advocate and activist for gender equity, women's health, access to justice and climate action. Your leadership experience and passion for your community and the city of Darabben more broadly makes me confident that you will fulfil your role with integrity and diligence, and in particular, as we set the direction of this council for the next four years. I wish you all the very best, and I look very much forward to working with you over the next 12 or so months. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, councillor Arturi.
Are there any further councillors who would like to say anything? Thanks so much, councillors. Oh, sorry, councillor Greco, I didn't see your hand.
Thank you. I also would like to congratulate the mayor, a newbie councillor and a newbie mayor, and also, I think it's important to point out that we have a Labor mayor now in the city of Darabben with a Labor majority here at the city of council, but also... But I'm sure that our new mayor will be working for the whole community, not only the Labor supporters and the Green supporters, but also for the other 46% of the community that did not vote either Labor or Green. So I know that this council will be a very inclusive council for the next four years under the leadership of our new mayor. And also, myself and I'm sure councillor Demetriadis, given our background and our experience, will be more than happy to provide any support that you may need in your next year of mayoralty, so congratulations once again.
Thank you, councillor Greco, I appreciate that. Okay, so we're moving on to item 4.3, and anyone correct me if I'm wrong, which is to determine the term of the office of deputy mayor. Is there a mover of a motion to maintain the role of deputy mayor to coincide with the term of mayor for the 202425 council year? Councillor Jelley, thank you. Do I have a seconder for that motion? Sorry. Councillor Stulpus, thank you. Does the mover wish to speak to the motion?
No, thank you.
Okay. Does the seconder wish to speak to the motion? Okay. I will now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Oh, sorry. That's unanimous carried. All right, so now we move on to item 4.4. In accordance with the council's governance rules, I will now conduct the election of the deputy mayor. So the process for the election of the deputy mayor is the same as that for the mayor, and will be conducted in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 and the Council's Governance Rules. Councillors, are there any nominations for deputy mayor? Councillor Greco?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Demetriadis.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that nomination? Councillor Bogus? Councillor Demetriadis, do you accept that nomination? Yep. Thank you, councillor O'Brien, so that's councillor Ruth Jelley nominated. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Yes, councillor Sangster? Thank you. And councillor Jelley, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
The nomination. Okay, are there any further nominations? No? Okay, so just the two? All right, so I will move on to the vote. I don't know where I am, but I think I know how to do it, so... Yes, so she goes first, yes, that's right. So we're going to start with councillor Demetriadis, if I can get all those in favour of councillor Demetriadis being the deputy mayor. Got one, two, three, four, five votes. We will continue on. Six votes. So I declare councillor Demetriadis the deputy mayor. And thank you to councillor Jelley too, I think it's great to have a lot of interest in the role, so... All right. Now, councillor, deputy mayor, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, mayor. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we gather, the Wurundjeri Wurung people of the Kulin nations, and pay my respects to the elders past and present, and extend my respect to any First Nations people here today. It's an incredible honour to be elected as the deputy mayor for Darabben City Council and elected as the councillor for the South East Ward. I want to extend my sincere thanks to the residents of Darabben South East Ward for placing their trust in me to be our community's voice. I also want to extend a big thank you to my councillor colleagues for choosing me as your deputy mayor. I did not take this role lightly, and I look forward to working with you all in the best interest of our community. As a lifetime local, I love our vibrant and diverse community, and I'm excited to be raising my family here in Darabben too. So I would also like to extend a big thank you to my family and all my friends who've supported me along this journey since I was elected in 2020. I'm really sorry. Okay, so over the last four years, just very overwhelmed, so thank you for the opportunity. Over the last four years, I've listened to the voices of thousands of residents, local organisations and businesses in our community, and I've seen many challenges that we will need to overcome. Sorry, thank you. So as I was saying, I've listened to many voices in our community, and I've seen many challenges that we will need to overcome, but I've also seen many opportunities for us to engage our entire community to ensure their voices are at the centre of every decision council makes. This is what I want to see for Darabben, a council that works together, listens to the priorities of our community and delivers them. I'm so sorry. I am really excited to embark on this journey with a brand-new council. It is absolutely a great opportunity for us to work collaboratively and get things done. I look forward to working with you all, I look forward to working with our new mayor, which is very exciting, our new councillor colleagues and councillor Greco as well, and our entire community to bring positive change in Darabben. I also look forward to working constructively with all members of our community to make our home of Darabben the best it can be. It's my promise to you that I will continue to listen and work in good faith to try and meet our communities... and work in good faith to try and meet our community's aspirations. Thank you.
Congratulations councillor Dimitri Artis on your election to deputy mayor. I really look forward also to working closely with you. I think we'll make a great team. I think we've got some really good complementary skills and I'll definitely be drawing on your knowledge of council processes and hopefully we can learn a lot from one another. So really fantastic. All right, I now invite each councillor in alphabetical order to make a two-minute speech. So we start with councillor Alexander Sangster.
Thank you. So first of all, I would like to acknowledge that we gather together on the lands that care for and nurture the people of the Kulin nations. In this place, it's Wurundjeri and Wurung, always was, always will be, and I pay my respects to elders past and present. Secondly, I would like to congratulate our new mayor and our new deputy mayor and I'd also like to express our thanks, deep thanks, to our former mayor Suzanne Newton and to the former expression of council, some of which have been re-elected. So we stand here as a new councillor group with four dynamic years ahead of us and we are all committed to working for Darabin. Anyone watching tonight would have seen that the three Greens councillors didn't put up a candidate for mayor. That's not because we don't have the values and skills required for this role, it's because we're smart women who are realistic and pragmatic enough to know that with five Labor councillors, they were going to want that role this time. So we thought we'd just, you know, pan that one over. You may have noticed though that we did nominate Ruth Jelly as deputy and we nominated her not only because she would have been fantastic, but also because we are committed, we are 100% committed to working across party lines, yeah? And sharing a real embodied vision for Darabin as a whole. So while we are disappointed at our fellow councillors' decision to stick to party politics, we remain hopeful that we will learn to take wild leaps of trust and be bold and brave and that together we can do great things for our beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Connie Bogus, can I ask you to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Alaris. We stand here this evening on the lands of the Wurundjeri, Wurung people and I pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. Sovereignty has never been ceded, it always was and always will be Aboriginal land. I also want to pay my respects to all First Nations people in the room who have served our nation in the Australian Defence Force. Thank you for your service. On a personal note, I would also like to say that last week in the beautiful Darabin Parklands, treaty talks commenced in Victoria and I look forward to working closely with our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander members during my term here. I would like to congratulate our newly appointed mayor Alaris and deputy mayor Dimitri Artis. The years of service you have both dedicated to your communities makes the position you have taken this evening very fitting and I look forward to working with you both over the coming year. So in saying that, and my reason for being here, 2024 has been quite the year for me, receiving an order of an Australian Medal in January and ending as your elected councillor in November. Both titles, community across Australia and locally here in Darabin, chose me. I am deeply honoured and now accept the responsibility to serve you. During my campaign, I knocked on 8,500 homes and made thousands of calls across the West Ward, visited services and community groups and I can stand here and proudly say I now know all of my neighbours. Although the spelling is different, I have already been working as a councillor for the past 20 years, but in the mental health sector. Managing non-for-profits, working in parkville prison, child protection, boards and committees and listening to people's needs. Working within community and helping people is something I love and drives my passion to make improved changes for those needing it most. So in saying that, our Darabin community has also chosen all of us to represent them and I look forward to working together as a council that is transparent, inclusive and actions improvements across the whole municipality. Although this will take time, I have no doubt the passion and expertise among us will be our driving force to improve this change. Lastly, and more personally, mum and dad are in the room. Dad, a teenager, a Macedonian migrant, his first home in Preston. Mum, also Macedonian, born and raised in Northcote. And ironically, these halls are where I had my prep to grade six Preston, Preston East Primary School end of year celebrations. Darabin is my family's heartbeat and a full circle moment tonight to be here with you all. I look forward to working on council to make sure our children, our community's future look bright for generations to come. Thank you.
Councillor Gaetan Greco, would you like to address the meeting?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new councillors. It's great to see you have seven new councillors have come on to the council. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the outgoing councillors and outgoing mayor that are here with us tonight. Also, I'd like to acknowledge all the candidates that contested the election. We often forget about them. And in particular, I'd like to acknowledge the progressive independent candidates that contested the election, namely Carmel Davis, Zen Chin, Caroline Lud, Leon Zambescas and Alex Patao. And also to also acknowledge and thank the socialist candidates that contested the election. And some of them just missed out, they could have been here tonight, but we have the existing councillors here tonight. Also, I like to, I was proud to be re-elected as a councillor for the fifth time and I was really honoured to receive the enormous vote that I did get from the world that I represent. I was truly touched by the consensus in the community of electing me as mayor. And I'm the only independent councillor here, so an old Northcote High School boy, Don Chip used to say, you know, keep the bastards honest. So that's going to be part of my job here, given that the council has five Labor councillors and three Green councillors. So as an independent, I hope to play that constructive role. Also, what's most important to me is not so much the vote that I got as an individual, but is what people voted for. And I like to list three of those things, which I will be prosecuting in these four years. And the first one is the Reservoir Leisure Centre, that must be rebuilt. The second one is, is the putting the Preston market in public hands. And the third one is that people actually overwhelmingly voted for was the no privatisation of aged care services by the council. I'll be fighting for those things on behalf of the community. I'd like to thank all the people that supported me in the campaign and put their trust in me again. I'm very touched by that. So thank you and let's get things done for Darabin.
Thank you. I think we all want to do that. Councillor Julia O'Brien, would you like to address the meeting?
That sounds more active. There we go. Thank you. So I too will acknowledge the Wurundjeri, Wurung people of the Kulin nations and pay respects to elders past and present and any Aboriginal people joining us here today. The commitment to treaty is real for people in this room and we were so privileged to be there last week as part of the launch of the negotiations and I stand here ready to walk that path alongside our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community and with our councillors and council staff. I will also offer my grand congratulations to our new mayor and deputy mayor. We have an exciting four years ahead of us where we continue to listen and deliver for our community. I am of course also disappointed that our fellow councillors chose not to move forward in the spirit of collaboration that councillor Sangster and I put forward to them in nominating councillor Jelly for the position of deputy mayor. We were excited to nominate Ruth as she has a wealth of valuable experience to contribute. She has demonstrated this experience while working across party lines with the Victorian Trades Hall Council, including on the executive. She's a team player, proactive and politically savvy and she was ready to support the new mayor with wisdom and grit. We put our hands up to represent our community because we believe that our wonderful diverse Darabin needs a council ready to have the big conversations and take the bold actions that they have told us they want. We remain committed to delivering this work with the mayor, the deputy mayor, other councillors and of course our talented council staff. And at that, we will be centring our community and the Aboriginal voices in the community here on Wurundjeri land. A final thank you, as others have done, to all the amazing people that supported us to get here. Friends, families, so many volunteers hitting the pavement with us, weekend in, weekend out, for months. None of us would be here without that help. So huge thank you to all of those people. Ngungejin.
Thank you. Okay, next we have councillor Matt O'Tury.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land that we are meeting on this evening and also thank Uncle Daniel Ross for that very beautiful and generous welcome to country. Can I use the first part of my allotted time, mayor, to congratulate deputy mayor, councillor Emily Dimitri Artis? I know that her experiences as one of only two re-elected councillors will be invaluable to supporting you, mayor, over the next 12 or so months and the enthusiasm as we saw in councillor Dimitri Artis's contribution just before and that she brings advocating on behalf of her community will I'm sure serve the broader city very well indeed. It is an honour to have been elected by the residents of Bundura, MacLeod, Kingsbury and Reservoir in the North East Ward. To represent the community that I have grown up in and lived in for 20 years is a privilege. And of course, the responsibility of being elected as councillor is not lost on me. We have a responsibility to always have the community at the heart of our decision-making and to do so for the benefit of residents right across the city of Darabin from north to south, from east to west. To outgoing councillors, some of whom are here tonight, thank you for your service to our community over a number of years and I wish you all the very best. To my friends, family and the countless volunteers who supported me over the last several months, it feels like a very, very long time indeed. Thank you very much. Of course, I would not be here without your unwavering support. To my fellow councillors and new colleagues, congratulations to all of you. And I look very much forward to working with you and indeed members of our diverse and vibrant community right across Darabin for the benefit of everyone right across this wonderful city. Thank you, mayor.
Councillor Ruth Jelly, would you like to address the meeting?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Alaris. I also pay my deep respects to the Wurundjeri, Wurung people of my dear Kulin nations and thank them for their millennia of knowledge sharing. I also thank Daniel Ross, if you're still here this evening, for welcoming us to your country and acknowledged that your land was stolen and never ceded. I share the sentiments of my fellow councillors here this evening in congratulating you, Christine O'Laurs, councillor Christine O'Laurs and councillor Emily Dimitri Artis on your election as mayor and deputy mayor. And I stand here committed to working constructively with you both and all councillors as a team to achieve the good outcomes for Darabin community. I also extend my sincere thanks to former mayors who join us here this evening, our most recent mayor Suzanne Newton and also former mayor Susan Reddy who have both supported me to step up and be here and run for council. Thank you for your many years of service to the Darabin community. I aim to bring my experience as a leader of a democratic organisation to support both of you as deputy mayor and mayor to fulfil your duties with integrity. Having held governance positions within my union, the National Tertiary Education Union, over the past five years, including at the most senior levels as national vice president and now as Victorian Assistant Secretary, I know intimately the challenges that are faced in striving for good governance, accountability and transparency and serving a community. And I stand open to share with you. Should you wish to seek advice and learn from any of my experience, my door is open. While we have missed an opportunity here to elect a diverse leadership team that spans political alliances, we still have many opportunities ahead to demonstrate to our community that we can work collaboratively as a group to achieve the best outcomes for our Darabin community. And that is what we three Greens councillors have committed to here this evening. As councillor O'Brien noted, working across political differences is not a new proposition to me. As a union secretary, I am involved in the heart of our Labor movement, our Victorian Trades Hall Council. I'm also experienced in representing the interests of my members across the parties within state parliament MPs. The best way to honour our commitment and to our community's request for collaboration and good governance is to hold true to our community's core values and demonstrate respect for our community and for each other. Thank you to everybody who's supported us to get here tonight. Ngungejin.
Thank you. And finally, councillor Vasilios Salkos.
I'd like to start off by acknowledging the traditional owners on the land on which we gather, the Wurundjeri, Wurung people, and pay my respect to elders past and present. Firstly, thank you to my friends, my family and the amazing campaign team who are here tonight to celebrate this occasion. It's an honour to be elected as councillor for the North Central Ward. And thank the people of Darabin for placing their trust in me. I'm committed to building a council that listens, that represents residents and delivers positive outcomes for our community. Congratulations to our newly elected mayor and deputy mayor and all councillors here today. I'd like to specially note a thank you to councillor Greco for nominating you as deputy mayor tonight in the spirit of collaboration. I'm looking forward to working with everyone on this council collaboratively and I'm confident we all recognise the important work we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move to item 4.6 now, which is the 2025 meeting schedule. Councillors, do you have any questions of the officers regarding this item? Hello? If there are no questions, we will commence with the debate. Oh, question?
Monday, Tuesday, something of January is missing, 28th. Oh, do we? Sorry.
So, Madam Mayor, we just need a mover for that to create the additional parts.
Can I move that?
Yeah, so. All right, I was just going to remind councillors that once we enter debate, there'll be no further questions. And do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Salkos. So do I have a second for the motion? Councillor Connie Bogus. Does the mover wish to speak? No. Does the second wish to speak? Okay. Are there any councillors who want to speak in opposition of this motion? Any other speakers? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you. I declare the motion carried unanimously. I think we've just got one more. Oh, okay. The next report we have to consider this evening is the signed oaths and affirmations of office and model code of conduct. Councillors, does anyone have any questions of officers regarding this item? Okay, if there's no questions, we will commence the debate. Okay, well if there's no questions, we will commence the debate. I remind councillors that once we enter debate, there will be no further questions. Do I have a mover for this motion? councillor Jellie, do you have a seconda for the motion? councillor Dimitriadis, does the mover wish to speak?
No, thank you.
No. Does the seconda wish to speak?
Oh, no, no, thank you, mayor. No, thank you, mayor.
That was a no?
No, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion? Are there any other speakers? Councillors, if there's no further debate, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? And that is carried, that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of the formalities this evening. Just before we close the evening, we want to take a moment to recognise former councillors, some of whom are here this evening. I think it's the front row, is it? I'll read them all out, but only some of you here. So Suzanne Newton, who has been the mayor, the deputy mayor and councillor, length of service of eight years and participated in 15 committees. We have Tim Lawrence, mayor, deputy mayor and councillor for 21 years, and he was on seven committees. Emily Dimitriadis is still here, as is Gaetano Greco. Tom Hannan, councillor, four years and on five committees. Trent McCarthy was the deputy mayor and councillor at various times. He was, his length of service was 16 years and on eight committee, eight committee memberships. Councillor Susan Rennie, oh, it's councillor Susan Rennie, mayor and councillor, eight year service and was on seven committees. Lena Messina, who also had roles of mayor and councillor over eight years, and she was on four committees. And Julie Williams, mayor and councillor for 12 years, with a service of 12 years, and she was on nine various committees. So congratulations, sorry, thank you to all of you for your service over those years, and we really, yeah, thank you for coming along this evening as well. You are all invited to join us now for some light refreshments in the show hall, and I will just ask the councillors to stay behind for a moment because we need to take a photo or two, I believe. I declare this meeting closed at?
6:53.
6:53. Woohoo, thank you.